Good morning, everyone. Wow, it's nice to have a full audience out here today and hear people talking and interacting. Some semblance of normal we're getting back to, thankfully. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge. Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, welcome back. It's good to see you and have you back amongst us. And I will just turn it over to you at this point.
All right, good morning, everyone, and it is great to be back. And this will be one spring break I'll never forget. That's for sure. And I want to start off in for the board and just say sincere thanks to you all. You all have called, you have texted, you have called and texted and checked on me, and that meant so much to myself and my wife, Alicia. And we really, really appreciate it and the thoughts and prayers. And so just wanted to start the meeting out saying that. And then I'll talk to my staff tomorrow because they did a real nice thing for me as well and pretty much saved my life, I think, by, what is it called? DoorDash? Yeah, yeah, yeah. A little DoorDash action. And it came at the right time. It's a, you can call restaurants and they'll deliver your, they'll deliver, you know, no, no, let me tell you what, Five Guys, Five Guys saved my life. The Five Guys french fries. And delicious. So, and then there are other restaurants too, and it was perfect timing for that. So I do appreciate everyone and it's great to be back. And we've got a real good workshop for you this morning. We have a couple of guests here. We've got Sean Boyle here from Children's Services Council, and we're going to do the summer school presentation in a minute. And Will Armstead from, yeah, Will, Big Brothers, Boys and Girls Club. I get to start with the B. Will's here. Anybody else from the outside? We may have, we'll have Summer Begall will probably be here from TC Palm as well. She usually walks in about 10 minutes late. So that's okay, too. And so what we're going to do is we have two presentations today. One will be to talk about summer school. Summer school will look different this year. Dr. Wild is going to make the presentation. We are going to, and then in two weeks at the board meeting itself, we're going to do a brief overview of some of the dollars that are coming in from the federal government, from the, you know, the CARES dollars. There's three rounds of it. We're really into the second round, so I really want to explain that. And then in a month at the workshop, really go through what we present to the board, what we think we want it to look like and answer your questions on that. So we'll learn more about that. But part of the dollars that we're going to be getting from the federal government will help us with summer school this year to really do an outreach in all grade levels for students. It's almost like an invite-only kind of a deal for students that are really struggling behind, but I don't want to give Helen's presentation. But we will be offering it in all of our school centers as well as our third grade. We've got some information about maybe trying to do a little kindergarten roundup stuff a little earlier this year as well. So it's going to be some exciting times doing things a little bit different. And then after we do summer school, I wanted to do a real in-depth overview of our CTE, Career Technical Education programs that we have in the district. I know every time I see that empty chair, I think we're missing a board member. They didn't put another one on while I was gone, right? We're still at five? Okay. And so I want to go through that and show you the great things that we're doing and how we're partnering with our community partners with that and the benefit that our students are getting as well. So Dr. Wild, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Good morning, board members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jent. Happy to be here. And we're going to be talking first about summer school, as Mr. Jent said. And as you all know, we had to pivot last summer, and we did expand summer school last summer. We did more than we've ever done before, but it was all online. It was very creative. And at that time, we did reach out to our community partners, specifically Sean Boyle and the Children's Services Council and all of his agencies, as well as Boys and Girls Club. And they were fantastic partners last summer and they continue to be this summer. We've been working through this plan with them, and we will continue to over the coming month or so as we get ready to launch this. And I would be remiss if I don't recognize the two people in the Office of Teaching and Learning that put in many hours preparing this, and that is our Director of Elementary Curriculum, Kimberly Jay, and she is out ill today, otherwise she would be here, as well as Rod Ricknada, our Director of Federal Programs. There's Rod right there. They have worked so hard on putting all of this together and helping me to bring it all together for our students. So this summer, we're doing our summer program in a big way, expanding it, really trying to address the children who may have fallen behind during this COVID-19 time and also working to reduce the number of retentions. As always, we do a third grade reading camp. This is actually part of a requirement that has to do with third grade retention as a result of FSAs. So right now, our plan is to continue our third grade reading camp, but it is expanded to full days and to six weeks rather than five. So it will be from eight to two, and it will begin June 21st. You may have read that our testing with the expansion of the window, the third grade test results will be back later. So we delayed the beginning of it, and we also want the students to be in school closer to the beginning of the school year. So this is what we're doing with third grade camp. If there's changes coming out legislatively, they'll roll into the new program I'll tell you about in just one second. Oh, the other change with third grade reading camp is that it is going to be at every school site. Every elementary in K-8 is going to host their own, and this was a suggestion that came from the principals in light of the rest of the summer plan. Along with that, we always do our extended school year for our exceptional students, our students with disabilities. That will continue and be aligned on the same dates, June 21st through July 29th, four days a week, from eight to two. But it will be at two locations. We concentrate the services, and this summer it will be at Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies and Oakham at K-8. And Bill Tomlinson and his department puts all of this together. New this year, though, is our Learning Adventure Camps, and this will be for our elementary students, and it will be hosted at every traditional elementary in K-8 site, so all 25 sites. It will involve fun themes for students, so they'll have fun activities around certain types of themes like drama and art and those types of things, animals and so forth. And they will be offered in three two-week sessions, also Monday through Thursday, full days. But students can do a two-week session and then go to other camps that they would normally do if they become available as we progress through COVID. Or they could do all three sessions. So you see they're broken down on the slide there, so you can see that. The hours I mentioned are eight to two, and transportation will be provided for those students who live in a transportation area to their school. These adventure camps will be very small size, 12 to 1, and each school will serve 96 students per session, which is 2,400 students district-wide. And if different students are in each segment, then it would be 288 students per school for a total of 7,200 students. But that's if every student was unique all three sessions. And we're working with principals and teachers to finalize what the themes will be for each segment. In addition, we are adding, as Mr. Jent mentioned, a new kindergarten transition camp. We know that many of our students did not participate in VPK, or they delayed the start of kindergarten, so we're starting it, we're calling it Kickoff Kindergarten. And this will be the last week before teachers return, the week of July 26th through July 29th, all traditional schools. And it will be by invitation to all incoming kindergarten students. And it will be like a one-day orientation where there'll be a parent segment for the students, they'll get to see the school, get comfortable with it before it's got the rest of the student body there, meet key members of the faculty and staff, and meet We also will continue our 21st Century Learning Camps. We have the schools listed there. These are all the schools that are currently the recipients of the federal 21st Century Learning Grant, and that program does continue. It's an after-school program that continues into the summer, and it's for project-based learning as well as support in reading and math. And then for our secondary schools, when you get into sixth through 12th grade, the focus changes to course or credit recovery, and this is to prevent retentions and to increase graduation rates. So we are greatly expanding the credit recovery, which normally focuses on eighth grade and 12th grade to include all sixth through 12th graders. So every school will host their own, and you can see the number of students that will be served if they need it. Mr. Nada is going to pass out a calendar for you. This is a draft calendar right now that gives you at a glance what will be happening throughout the summer on each day, at what type of school. And we also have it broken down into a more specific calendar, and this is for our law enforcement agencies, our community partners, anybody who works with us throughout the summer, including our own departments here, to know very quickly what's happening at our school sites. I also need to give a shout-out to Terrence O'Leary and his entire department because they've been working very closely with us, because this is a lot of additional transportation this summer and food service as well, and they've been fantastic. And also, we have to also plan around custodial and maintenance needs during the summer. We also have a high school transition day, which is similar to the Kickoff Kindergarten Day, and this is for our high school students, some of which have not been in school. Ninth grade is always that scary time when you enter the big high school, and so we're going to provide an orientation day for the students. They will all be invited to attend, and they will be able to see the cafeteria, understand where they will sit for lunch, and read their schedule and know what it means. So all of those fears that come with the first day of high school can be alleviated. We do want to get the word out about these programs. So the programs that are specific to students who are targeted because they've fallen behind or they're Level 1 and 2, they will receive a personalized invitation and a flyer that will be standardized but personalized by the school level. They'll follow up with phone calls, and we'll make sure that they know about it and that they take advantage of this opportunity. We always translate into Spanish and Haitian Creole, and now we've added Portuguese to our translations. We are already out there talking to all of our community partners. We've done a roundtable presentation. I believe that was the one that Dr. Prince did. We've spoken to the Children's Services Council in their weekly meetings. In fact, Terrence and I are scheduled to do another one this Friday. We've done the academic roundtable with Mrs. Holly, and there will be a lot of two-way communication with these agencies this year, making sure that we keep tabs on all of our students. Mr. Jent mentioned, he alluded to our kindergarten enrollment campaign. We're really going to be pushing hard to get our kindergarten students enrolled earlier so they can take advantage of that Kickoff Kindergarten Day. And then, of course, we'll be using all of our media outlets and working with Lydia Martin and her staff to make sure we get the word out as well. That's the summer school presentation, just a quick overview of it. And as I mentioned, we have our community partners here today because we want to make sure that we take advantage of all of the services that are out there and that we also cooperate because they have some wonderful summer programs going on as well. Are there any questions?
In regards to the programs, and you said we're going to have a presentation today, are they going to tell us what their needs are as well in regards to us working together?
They are not presenting today. I'm sorry if that sounded like that. We have been working with them for several weeks now, a month, on what we're going to be doing this summer. We're going to meet with them again on Friday, and that is to coordinate plans, and that won't be the end of it. We'll continue to work together. And part of that is them telling us their needs as well. Transportation needs to their agencies after 2:00, if they have services that will extend the day for families who need it, potentially some services from them on our campuses. We are working through that with the plans that they currently have in place as well. Everybody has stepped up to do what we can for our students during this time.
Because of the COVID, the COVID slide, you know, our students have suffered from that, as they have across the state. And so we want this to look different because we don't want it to just be an academic-based. That's why we're calling it the Summer Learning Camps, each schools, they're kind of almost competing with each other on thematic units and themes to get the kids in there. And to, you know, have a good time and have fun as well as, you know, that's our hook, as well as then to try to, you know, to catch them up to where they need to be. And knowing that there's so much going on in the community at that time with the different organizations that we think that we, you know, that's why we're trying to get the word out to everyone so that we can make the most of this, you know, because the priority really for me is the academic piece for our students, but then, you know, and it's free, and transportation is there, and food is there. It's like a regular, it's really a continuation, but it'll be a more fun, relaxed atmosphere for summer school for the students. And, you know, with our kindergarten, we are going to get a few of our social workers with some of the federal CARE dollars as well, and we're going to do a really, really strong media blitz, social media blitz, to get out, because we know, we don't know to what extent kindergartners didn't come back this year in St. Lucie County, but we do know as a state and as a country that, you know, there was a lot of students that were missing. So we really want to get out into the community, into the churches, into the special events that go on, because I think that some of those may get more normalized this summer as well, to really do a push to have the parents not wait till the last moment to register for kindergarten, but to register them as early as they can, and then to get those students in a couple of days early as well to acclimate them to the school day and what school would look like. Parents will be invited in as well. There's a parent component for that piece so that they can come in and get to know the school. And just things that are a little bit different from before, but the main focus is to work with the community, to get our students that need to be in academics this summer. And this may be something that carries over to next summer and the following summer, just depending upon, you know, what the data shows us, what the, you know, where our students were performing at that time. So, and again, this will come from our federal CARE dollars that are out there, so it's not going to affect our general fund, and the dollars are there for us to do this right and to do everything we can to benefit our students.
Mr. Jent, I think Sean Boyle would like to say a few words, if that's okay?
Sure.
Like might be a strong word, but strongly encourage to say a few words. With, when COVID hit, first of all, the Children's Services Council, we currently fund 15 locations for after-school programs, and the summer we expanded, so we're going to have 25 summer locations through the Children's Services Council's partnership. When the pandemic hit back in March, we started weekly meetings with all of our after-school and now summer programs. And last year, just like this year, we worked closely with the school district for the Sparks Notebook or Spark packets we helped get out, and then obviously with the virtual learning Launchpad sites, we worked closely with the school district. So this year, and big credit to the schools, and particularly Dr. Wild and Terrence, they've joined us a couple of times. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that we're working together so that the students that you've identified, if they're registered in one of our summer camps, we want to make sure that those families are well aware of the resources that are available. And then knowing that the summer camps end at 2:00, and some parents, you know, are still going to be working, we're talking with, no promises being made because it's not up to me to promise what our programs can do, but we're having dialogues about maybe there's ways so that the transportation could be provided to that location so that the families don't have to worry about picking up their child or having a child unattended at 2:00. So those are the kind of things that we're still working through, and it's just, the only way that's going to get worked through is consistent dialogue with all of our providers. So Dr. Wild and Terrence are going to join us again this Friday to answer many questions that they have. And we just greatly appreciate the partnership because it's, regardless of whether it's the school districts or the Boys and Girls Club or all the other locations, it's all of our children, and we all want what's best for them, particularly in regards to addressing the academic, summer, and now COVID slide.
Thank you, Sean. He mentioned one thing that I thought was so gracious, and that is if a student is targeted and behind academically and enrolled in one of their programs, they have volunteered to work with us to encourage them to come to our summer school first and then go to their agencies, which is, you know, very kind of them to work with us to make sure that we're meeting academic needs. As well as the Spark packets he mentioned, for those of you that don't know, last year in COVID, we sent every elementary child a family academic packet of learning activities in ELA, English Language Arts and Math. And Children's Services Council helped to sponsor that along with the Education Foundation. And as recently as, two weeks ago, I had a parent praising us for those Spark packets and utilizing them, so that was great news. Will Armstead is also another partner with Boys and Girls Club, and he would like to also address the board.
Thank you for having me. I wanted to say, first and foremost, we had the opportunity to play a role during this pandemic with the kids with, I forgot the name of the program, but it was in the morning where the Launchpad, and that was huge. But we also learned that we're not the educators. We do the enrichment programs after school, and so it was a pleasure working with the schools during that time, and we continued up through now to work with them. So we're excited about what this could look like. I know my team is working hard with the school district as well. As you know, we're in 15 of your locations every day. So whatever it is that's going to benefit the kids, we're open to doing it. So, so far, so good, and the plan looks well.
The one piece, when we talked about the after 2:00, we don't want to have parents, we're going to try to do the transportation then to wherever it is that they would need to go to, whatever program that is. We want to do everything we can to help the parents so they don't have any reason not to send them in so that we can catch them up. And so with working with these partners and other partners that are out there, again, we feel confident that we can do that, we have the resources to do that, and so it's a big undertaking, but one that's definitely needed. It's our highest priority, teaching and learning of our students anyway. So really excited about that and appreciate Sean and Will being here today as well on that. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, just basically a comment. The Smart Pack, well, I do have a question. The Smart Packs, is that going out to every child, and what grade is it going out to?
The Spark packets we gave out last year, we did not have plans to give those out this year. I suppose we could still talk about it, because I see your face. We could still talk about that.
And the comment that I wanted to make was I'm really happy to hear that we are all working together, school, district, and community, and that the community understands that they're not the educators. And so we do need the school district to be the educators and make sure, first, and make sure that the kids are getting what we know that they need to improve. And then also understanding that we're not, we're definitely not the ones that do a lot of the recreation. We need to focus on that academic and then let the community focus on the other things that they focus on. So we're working together, and that's good news to hear that. I'm sure that we'll help our children really remain strong and grow where we want them at as long as we, as the adults, work together. So I'm good to, that's good news for me.
Do you have a figure, I know it's a tough question, you figure on what this all is going to... Where's the money coming from?
This will come from the...
It looks like the Children's Services Council is paying a big chunk, but...
No, this will come, no. This will come from the CARES Act. This will come from the federal dollars.
Oh, it is, okay.
And the approximate number is...
4.8 million.
4.8 million. And so this will...
That's what we talked about on the phone. That's what...
Yeah, yeah, so this will come from, this will come from the dollars that come down from the federal government. It'll be no impact on our general operating budget, and we're going to put it to use. We're going to put those dollars to good use. And so, and again, we're going to come back in a month, we're going to give a brief overview in two weeks at the board meeting at the beginning, and then go in, then this time next month, really give you guys in the weeds the dollars that are available, what our recommendations would be as to what that needs to look like. We're meeting with cadres of principals. We'll be talking with David Freeland, our union partners, to keep them in the loop as well. So we're just at the beginning stages of that. But it's the summer program, we've been working on this for a while, and, you know, we feel confident this is going to be a really good program.
And also having the fundings from the CARE Act, you know, I really want us to consider as a district, as long as we have the funding to do so, is to continue the transportation after school to the nonprofit organizations without charge, because it's been kind of rough for certain organizations to keep up with the payments of the parents and the transportation. So let's keep that in mind as well to make that happen as long as we have the dollars.
Okay. We'll take a look.
Just wanted to mention, it's from CARES 1, we've reserved CARES 1 to do this, and then some of it will come from ESER 2. And as Mr. Jent said, we'll go into detail. But I think it's important to note that because when people say that that money hasn't been spent yet, it's been saved for summer programming.
You mentioned you want, it's summertime, you want the kids to have fun and enjoy it, so.
Exactly.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So with regards to transportation, the exception of the ESE, they are only at two schools, Sam Gaines and Oakham, so is transportation going to be provided for these children to those schools?
Yes, excellent question. That is, ESE bus transportation is different. It is usually door-to-door, and it's countywide. Thank you. You're welcome.
With that, if I may, if Bill could come up and just kind of explain for the board, really what that looks like, the students that are involved in our summer programs?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Jent. For extended school year, that's an IEP, an Individual Education Plan Service. So that's an extension of the regular school year for kids with disabilities. That helps them to continue to acquire the skills that are essential for them to move and progress year by year. For extended school year programs, these are usually for students that are in self-contained or separate type class placements on the regular campuses during the school year. The majority of our children, more than 80% of our kids with disabilities, are already included in the general education program, so they will be taking advantage of all of the other opportunities. But for those kids that are on the spectrum, for autism, kids that have intellectual disabilities, kids with severe emotional disabilities that need more intensive services, that's the type of programs that we cluster during this time for those students.
Thank you, Bill.
Ms. Richardson, did I see you had another?
Thank you. For the new Learning Adventure Camp, what's the age group?
That is our current kindergarten through fourth grade, so going into first through fifth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Great presentation and an exciting summer ahead.
Yes, we are looking forward to it. All right, we're ready to move.
One more question. I know this is like beating a dead horse here, but in regards to the summer packets that we gave last year, I think that the organizations really need to make sure they have something that when they do get the kids, because some will have kids that will not be with us, but they will be with them all day, that they have something from us that can help aid those children along.
You bring up a good point, because I said they were family packets for home use, and they were, but they were also used by our community agencies that had students that did physically go in, so that is an excellent point. And you asked about grade levels, that was kindergarten through fifth last year, and so now that the students would be moving to the next grade, the same packets could still be useful. So excellent point. We'll pursue that after today.
Within our organization, after-school organization, we're not having kids come in, but we are having them tutored, one-on-one tutoring...
Right.
...throughout the summer as well. So we want that package so that we can give it to our tutors, that they can help with that and focus on what we're doing in school rather than be all over the place and not really focusing on what the kid might need.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, our next presentation, you're going to be sick of me, is Career Technical Education. And as Mr. Jent... And as, Mr. Jent, did you want to say something before I start?
Yes, I want to, I want to open, I want to start this one as well and ask Alicia, our director of, thanks, guys. I see y'all sneaking out. Go ahead. Just making sure it wasn't staff members. Bring Alicia up. Alicia is our Director of Career Technical Education. She is doing a remarkable job with this and working with our community agencies, and you will see in the presentation, this is a pretty in-depth presentation today. On your table is the Florida Trend Magazine for the month of March. And if you'll turn and open it up to page thirty, thirty-three, there's a special section in here on St. Lucie County. And page thirty-three, it'll, it says St. Lucie County, and you'll see the photograph there, up, up and away, and a beautiful shot of part of the marina downtown Fort Pierce. And then if you just kind of scroll through, you'll see, and that's your copy. I, I may have given some of you the copy already, so if you already have it, just turn it back in. But if not, that's yours to keep. And you can see information there, it talks about A Tale of Two Cities. You can see some of the advertise, advertisements. When you get over to page forty-three, it's really where it talks about the education programs, very briefly, but you can see that we're in there and, and some of the higher ed, post-secondary ed programs. And then if you look on page forty-five, you'll see the ad that we took out, the full-page ad, which is also in the front, right here over next to the screen. And we're using that, we've got that now in our different, down in, I believe it's in the Fort Pierce has it, the Fort Pierce City Council, it's in St. Lucie County, the St. Lucie County Commission, Port St. Lucie, we have a, like a poster that this is framed out. So we're, we're sticking this in, all over the place to brand what we're doing. And you can see, take a closer look, and you, and you see the photographs of the students there, and the accolades of the district, CTE partnerships, and then Teach Near the Beach, which is really, we wanted to do this. This is, this goes out to about 300-plus thousand folks have subscription. So it was a really way to, even though they were marketing and looking at the county itself, we really tried to do a big push to push about what we're doing in St. Lucie County, what we're doing with our career education programs. You'll see more of that today, but I'm very, very proud of this. I appreciate Lydia and, and, and Alicia and Helen and the team. Everyone was involved in, in developing the, the advertisement itself. And so, and then this is, you know, you can't, really, this is really good exposure for, across the state, for industries as well as folks that may want to move to the community. And we, so we kind of hit, try to hit everything, we tried to hit everything we could with industries as well as trying to attract a workforce to come here and work. So again, proud of this, and that's your copy for that. And then we'll go ahead and turn this over to Helen and, and get in the weeds a little bit as to exactly what we're, what we got going on right now. There are really great things in our county. Helen, Dr. Wild.
All right. Well, I would like to begin by telling you a little bit about Alicia Sights right here. I know she looks like a grown adult, but I still see a high school student when I look at her, because I met her 23 years ago when she was in the Allied Health Career Technical Program at Centennial High School. And she graduated, she was a standout student. She graduated in the first graduating class in the year 2000. Then she went off to be a registered respiratory therapist, very successful in the field, until I could entice her to education at Treasure Coast High School, where she became an Allied Health teacher and taught in the CTE program. And then I moved on to district office, and she moved up and became a dean at a K-8 school. And then we were fortunate to get her here in our CTE department. And then when we had an opening for Director of Career Technical Education, we put a committee together, which included Pete Tesh from the Economic Development Council, and she was the, far and away, the standout in that process as well, and has been doing an amazing job and is extremely responsive to the business and industry community that we work with. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about her and why she sits in that seat. And in this presentation today, we're going to first talk about what career technical education is, why it's great for students and the district. We'll go over our program offerings. We'll talk about industry certifications, our community partnerships, and our expansion, our recent expansions, and future expansions. One of the things that we try to do in career technical education is be responsive to the business community, the student interests, and also there's a lot of moving parts, constantly changing legislation, and also economic needs. So career technical education, people don't really know what it is because they talk about vocational education as if it's gone away. It has not gone away. It is career technical education. It's just, every field is much more technical, high-level than it was in the past, but those, those previous trade skills are still there. So we're going to talk about that. It begins in middle school with a lot of exploration, learning about careers, what's out there. Then in high school, all of our high schools offer CTE programs that are sort of like majors. It's not one class and you're done. It's a, it's a sequence of up to eight courses, and students are involved in it for three, sometimes four years of their high school career. We have many different kinds of pathways. Some are concentrated, unique to a school or a couple schools, and some are in every single school. And that is based on demand, and it changes as economic needs changes and student interests change. So we're going to talk about that because in every single program, we use the industry standard equipment that is required so that students graduate prepared. We work hard to make sure that our teachers are certified and that they receive all of the industry certifications that they must teach to. And we also take advantage of the expertise in the community with our business and industry partners, with advisory boards, and that helps their teachers to stay current as well, along with some new initiatives that have been put in a place, put in place since Alicia has been here. So moving on here, I'll get, oops, I'll get all of these up there. Our students earn industry certifications in every single one of our CTE programs. So those are certifications that are nationally recognized, and they come through third-party organizations. They're not education-related tests, the same tests that adults take out in the community. All of our programs also offer college credit, so that when students complete a program in any one of our high schools, and then they go on to a state, a state community college or IRSC, they receive college credit because they've already taken the classes at the level that the college recognizes. So it's kind of a retroactive awarding of college credit that's worth a lot of money to our families. And within our programs, we also have on-the-job training, sometimes called clinicals or practicums, where our students go out and work in the community while they're in high school.
That all of our CTE courses have certifications, all of them?
All of our CTE programs do have embedded industry certifications. That is correct. Yes.
And that, that those certifications are acknowledged throughout the community because it's not being done with us giving it to them, but that particular field of industry?
Correct. They are all, they have to be on an approved list of national certifications, and that list does change whenever industry, whatever the field is, whether it's automotive or health, medical, we have to be responsive and, and change those certifications. So when you see the presentations about industry certifications and the numbers, they're through these programs. Some of them are embedded in a single course, and some of them are higher level, and you take them at the end of an, an entire course sequence. Medical has many certifications, and we're going to show you that as we go through. But yes, and they are given on our school campuses at no charge to the students, but they are the same exact tests that are given in the, in whatever the related industry is.
Thank you.
And it is a very important point that we must all work to get that word out to people because it's, it, it takes some explaining if you're not involved in this work. There is also research to show that students in CTE programs do have higher reading and math scores, and the content is what pushes that. It's a great place to teach reading skills, the technical terms, the math that's related to some of these fields. These students select their CTE program, so it usually does increase their engagement in school. For some students, it's why they come to school. And I've always been a big believer in that. We do have some embedded videos here. I'm going to show you one, and then on your own time, the link on the right is another video of news coverage over the years that we've accumulated. But let's go ahead and show you this one. And these pictures are a variety of different CTE programs in the beginning.
Career and Technical Education creates pipelines to provide graduating students more opportunities into careers after graduation. CTE is building a future for students as another option beyond high school. A partnering company with St. Lucie Public Schools is Phoenix Metals located in St. Lucie County. Students are able to join the apprenticeship program at Phoenix Metals directly from their participation in the boot camp for one of the many career and technical programs offered by St. Lucie Public Schools, such as manufacturing and engineering.
Every one that we speak to is looking for help in skilled trades. Some are looking for experience, obviously, that's getting harder and harder to find. So every company is looking at training programs, such as the apprenticeship program, and they're hiring with the OJT, on-job training, plus apprenticeship program, so that they can get the employees trained to do the job that they hired them for.
Career and Technical Education Programs work with guidance counselors to develop a plan of action for current and graduating students.
I didn't really much know what I wanted, but I was mostly wanted to do hands-on jobs because I'm good with my hands and stuff like that. One day, my guidance counselor called me about the, the program and asked me if I wanted to, wanted to join, and I said yes.
We did hire Ricardo from there. He's been here a year, he will be this June. He's gone on, he did the OJT, gone on to apprenticeship program, kind of like halfway through it. He's doing a terrific job.
I didn't really want to go to college, so I kind of just started looking at different career options where I didn't have to go to college, more towards trades. My engineering instructor, he, basically, he asked me one day, he said, would I like to go on a job shadowing at Phoenix? And I said, yeah. And so I went there, and at the end of the day, I asked Mr. Wilcox if he would hire me part-time.
Michael came from Treasure Coast High School. He had advantage because he had the manufacturing class.
The more certifications you have under your belt, the better chances you have of being successful in different companies.
The more vocational education they can get in the school system, the better the employee is going to be.
The Boot Camp is a program hosted by the Economic Development Council in partnership with St. Lucie Public Schools, Treasure Coast Builders Association, and local businesses in skilled trades, manufacturing, and engineering.
We're a company that has three major skills. We have machine operators, which we drill, punch, shear, saw material, a lot of computerized machines, so we have that, we call those machine operators, we have that level. We have the welders, which is pretty much self-explanatory. Then we have final assembly, where the bulk of our work is, is where they do, we do everything. We do electrical, hydraulic, mount it to the unit, wire it up, plumb it with the hydraulics, get it operational, send it, we send it out to have painted, and, and mount it to the unit. Some chassis we build from the ground up. We install our front ends, rear ends, steering, engines, transmissions, and every mount equipment on that.
From the Boot Camp, graduating students seeking options outside of going to college are able to participate in a week-long boot camp to study and gain skills necessary to start a career. This boot camp serves as a pipeline leading graduating students to meet with potential employers right here in St. Lucie County.
And that was where we took a group, I think we had like 18 young people that take tour, right out of high school, just graduated, all 18, you have to be 18, graduated, and they went to visit different companies. And then on the fourth day in the afternoon, we had guest speakers talking about different things. And then on the fifth day, we signed-
I'm going to stop that one there, so you can see Mr. Jent as the last image in that video, as, because I'm going to talk more about boot camps in just a minute, so I'm going to move on. You know, that video talked a lot about our engineering and manufacturing programs, and I always tell people, sometimes the students take the program not because they think that's what they're going to do, but it's just fun, it's where their friends are, or they like the teacher, you know, it doesn't matter. My own daughter did this, this particular program, didn't want to go into engineering, went to college for art. And luckily, because she had AutoCAD in high school, she got back into engineering after college. And so, thank God for high school, she's making a lot more money than she was going to otherwise. With this, we have 34 career academies in our schools, 56 different programs, because some programs are duplicated. We have 47 articulation agreements with the community college. And we also have PSAV, which is Post-Secondary Adult Vocational Dual Enrollment, in three programs right now. And as the college expands in the trades, those partnerships will definitely expand. Right now, it's automotive, HVAC, and welding. This is our current number of students enrolled in CTE programs, 7,848 currently. And just briefly, we'll mention middle school because middle school is where the career exploration is heavy. The students do take some CTE electives as they go through middle school, and some of them also earn a different type of certification, which I'll show you in just a second. This here is our list of, a sample list of middle school courses. The course titles and the schools are listed there, and that's a sample for you. So you have a copy of this too. I know you can't see it on the slide. When we look at high school, all of this is on the website. If you go to the Career Technical Education Department section, you can see an overview of all of our CTE programs. Also, if you go to each individual school, you can see their specific CTE programs. And each year, we follow the changes coming from the state, and tweaks are made. Schools propose new ideas, or business and industry does, and we add things. There's Port St. Lucie Schools, and I know you have a copy in there if you want to look more closely. But every school, almost every school has culinary arts, every school has the medical programs, and then other programs, the heavier industrial ones are more concentrated. All of the schools have digital technologies of some type or another related to engineering and other computer-based fields. We have some specialty programs that we'll show you in just a few minutes. This is an alphabetical list of all of the industry certifications, as I was mentioning earlier, and Dr. Mills was asking more about. This is the current list of industry certifications. That is already, we know is going to change slightly for next year, but it does change every single year. And I mention that because it requires our teachers and our staff to be responsive, because that means the teacher needs to get certified in something else, learn new skills or slightly different skills. And they do an amazing job. In middle school, we offer digital tool certifications. These are more introductory, and our schools are doing a great job with these as well, and they just give students some basic skills to help get them ready for their high school And those are, that's a comprehensive list of digital tools for middle school. This, I know you cannot read this, but I, I have it in here just to reference it because you have, you have a full-size copy in the gray folder that we put on your desk. It's the first document on the right. If you ever need a one-page snapshot of what is offered in the district, this is every program. It's got a checkmark next to the school where it's offered, and a complete list of the current industry certifications within that program. So this doesn't look like much, but it's, it's a one document that you could always refer to for information. This is the five-year industry certification trends. You'll see, if you look back to 15, 16, where we were five years ago, we only had 989 certifications that year, doubled it within the next year, and then by 18, 19, you see it went up to 2,980. Last year was challenging. Some of the certifications had to be put on hold because they require a close proximity to a, a patient, specifically in allied health. And then some of them were put on hold by the industry themselves. So we found it remarkable that we were still able to get 2,300 certifications last year. We're going to talk about our community partnerships- We're going to talk about our community partnerships, and Alicia's going to share some things with you as well. But these are some of our big community partners. And Treasure Coast Builders Association and Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association have really become tight partners of us over the last several years. We have longstanding partnerships with all of the hospitals that have continued to evolve. We'll tell you more about that in a minute. And then we have 47 separate business and industry partners that provide advice to our teachers, opportunities for our students, and so forth, sometimes equipment, all sorts of things. On here, this talks about the Skills Gap Analysis Study that was done. This was not a school district initiative, this was a community-wide initiative, in response to some of the conversation that you've all heard out there about business and industry having trouble filling their positions, especially when construction came, started to come back, and all those workers had really left the area. So this was put on by the Economic Development Council and others, and they did an analysis in 2017, and we were involved in it, Mr. Gent, myself, Alicia, we were all part of this. And then they did it again in 2019, and the focus changed, so you have that information in there. We are currently working under Skills Gap 2.1 to increase, and really, the focus now has, it was on education, it's shifting more to the businesses and what they can do. And you can see, since those Skills Gap initiatives come up, these are all, in the blue, those are all new strategies that we have put in place. We have the School Counselor Bus Tour, which we were the first in the state, others are now copying that. We have a healthcare roundtable. We have virtual employment sessions for graduating seniors. Of course, virtual was a pivot reaction to COVID. We've expanded many of our programs. We have a State of the Jobs Fair that we do. We have a Ready-to-Work Boot Camp, which you saw a little bit of in the video. We now have a Marine Roundtable, and new programs that we're going to go over. And this is in addition to all of the existing strategies that we already had going on that are on the right side. So the School Bus Counselor Tour, when we started that, it was so well-received, both by the businesses and by our counselors. And now we've had so many, we've been able to branch into many, many industries, we've been able to expand it to invite the teachers as well. So we literally put them on a bus, and they take a field trip, and the businesses host us there. And then we had to move it to a virtual format, but we're going to go ahead and show you a quick peek, just a tiny segment of a video, although we have lots to choose from, and you have them all in the PowerPoint.
St. Lucie Public Schools is making students college and career-ready, successful, and filling the pipelines to ensure that students are on the correct pathway to success.
Part of the main mission that I'm becoming aware of with my position on the Treasure Coast Manufacturers Association Board, is to kind of make it more of a collaborative effort to where we can both educate the manufacturers and the businesses in the area, as well as educate the public school people of what's needed. So it's kind of making a collaborative effort and get a pipeline of kids ready for the workplace, as well as get the manufacturers ready to accept those kids.
I've gone on some of those bus tours, they are amazing. This particular video, Tamco is in there, you know, one of our newer businesses, they've been to A1 Trust, all of the boating companies. I know Mr. Gent has gone many times as well. As a former counselor, I never knew the opportunities that were here locally for our kids. So this has been a great enhancement. We have pivoted and done virtual tours now, and so you can see that in November, we did a healthcare one. Alicia, would you talk about healthcare and the need for expanding the healthcare? Well, in just a second, we're going to talk about the roundtable in just a second. So we did do the virtual counselor tour here, and we also did the marine industry with everything that's happening in the port. We have greatly expanded this. This is a sample of the virtual tour. You can see the two very special guests that we had that started it off, and then the different partners that we had involved in the healthcare one, basically all of the hospitals, as well as the Economic Development Council. And that was news coverage, we do news coverage for all of these. Okay, we're going to talk about the boot camps here. Alicia, why don't you tell them a little bit about how this came to be, and then we'll show a quick video.
Just off of the counselor bus tours?
Go ahead and get to the microphone.
Yeah, and take your mask off.
Just, this came about from the counselor bus tours. As we started going through the businesses, and the counselors started having awareness for the jobs that were out there, we had a ton of students that were going to their counselors and asking them, you know, what opportunities were out there for them? You know, some of the students, they weren't ready to go away, they didn't have a college or career plan. And so what we ended up doing was, we worked with the Economic Development Council, and we created the boot camp. We started recruiting kids. The first year, we had six weeks when this initiative came about. We had roughly 20, 22 students or so in there. And so what we did was, we just had the students come in, we got businesses involved, they were excited, the students were excited, and the students just, they started learning about financial, the changes, the financial components of it, the skills, the jobs out there. The growth that we saw from Monday through Friday of that week, that signing day, was instrumental. So what we did was, we started to expand the initiatives, as Dr. Wild mentioned. State of the Jobs Conference was one of them the following year. We started our recruiting efforts, and in addition to bringing on the counselors, we also brought in the graduation coaches, the teachers, for the fields that were identified, engineering, and then manufacturing was the first year, skilled trades was another one, through the Builders Association. So we started recruiting the students earlier, letting them become a little bit more aware. The actual students that participated in Year Two Boot Camp, those students were in our programs, they had the skill sets. And we are seeing, you know, we had the job, we had the job placement that Friday of the second year, and we saw the numbers going up. Unfortunately, last year we had COVID. This year, we are going to expand, and we're going to continue. We are recruiting actively today, as we speak, the students at all of the high schools. We continue to have this, and what we're looking to do is get the businesses that really need students to be able to come in and, you know, have a direction of where they want to go. So we would like to get these students placed as soon as they complete the first week of the boot camp this year.
And you can see the dates on the slide up there for the upcoming boot camp. And here's another little clip, and you can see you have some news coverage as well.
Today and this week, I think, is going to change your lives, because you're going to understand the world of work, and I hope on signing day, you all get some jobs.
The fact that you have come forward to be in this program says a lot about who you are. Believe that there's something inside of you that will cause you to outperform anybody, that nobody can take that away from you, all right? Because what's important is how you view yourself, and that's going to determine how successful you're going to be.
For them, it's a great chance to see what they like, what they don't like, kind of walk into this blind on Monday, and really hopefully come out at the end of the week realizing, God, I really like plumbing, or I really like windows, or I really like electrical, and try and get a career path for them that makes sense for each of the individual kids that are in the program.
Today, we are here working on the duct system. The gentlemen I'm working with, the young men, are making the distribution cans. We are putting the collars in them, we're taping them down.
We're learning how they connect all the air conditioning stuff, and they're actually demonstrating in wedding guest do it ourselves.
I'm just, I'm really excited for the rest of the week, like, this program, I'm really glad I got in it, it's a great opportunity for me and anybody else who may be able to be in it. I'm just really excited, I'm glad I got to do it.
So the experience was pretty good, I'm looking forward to tomorrow, you know?
I'm in the manufacturing part of the program. I think it's a really good opportunity to help kids fresh out of high school find good jobs.
So we have other companies from the community coming into the career day. Our goal is to get these kids hired and all have jobs and careers starting on Monday the following week. The partnership with the school board has been amazing. You know, we showed up at advisory meetings at Port St. Lucie High School specifically because they have a carpentry program there. So we spent a lot of time this year with the kids in that program, through their process, getting to understand where these kids are.
I think it's a great program that more schools, different states should take part in, because no one talks about trades nowadays as much as this program did, and it really helped us out.
I have an offer for Walmart Distribution, and A1 Roof Trust, and PGA Golf Club.
I have an interview for Maverick at 9:30.
The whole week was just great, great learning opportunity to learn all different types of trades. I found out HVAC I just liked the most. I went up to them today on signing day, and they just hired me on the spot, all three of us.
My experience this week was very nice. I say that because it opens up a wide diversity to females in the area to go outside of the box, from what you've normally heard, such as doctors, lawyers, accounting, social services. It opens a wide range for us females to go outside of our comfort zone for jobs.
So we're very proud of the boot camps, because they are, like, as you can see, a kicked-up recruiting fair. They explore, and then they interview, and they're hired on the spot. So Alicia mentioned the State of the Jobs Conference, that was a big one-day conference, we're the hub of that, other districts do come, and it is just more opportunities to meet businesses, and they have been very appreciative of the opportunity as well. There's a keynote speaker, it's fantastic, it's been at the Civic Center and at the Fenn Center. Now, the healthcare roundtable, this has really been a big emphasis of late, and with Alicia's background in healthcare, she's going to share why and where we are with healthcare right now.
In 2017, going back to the Skills Gap, healthcare, the healthcare industry was identified as a big gap for employees needed. And so what we've been doing is, we established the healthcare roundtable, and that's comprised of, you know, post-secondary education institutions, businesses, the major hospitals. And so what we've done is, we've really evolved over the last few years on how we can get the alignment for the pipeline and the pathway for our students. And so we have the certifications, Certified Nursing Assistant, Certified Medical Administrative Assistant, as well as EKG Technician. And so, as you guys saw previously, we took the first, we pivoted, and instead of doing a counselor bus tour, we had to do a counselor virtual session. And that was around healthcare, because given COVID and the current pandemic, as you guys are all aware, there's even more of a need for healthcare employees. So what we did was, we had the hospitals, and we had the post-secondary institutions come on, speak again to the counselors, our graduation coaches, our teachers, we recorded the session. From that counselor virtual session, the counselors were able to, and the participants were able to learn about the opportunities that are out here. We have grown through the roundtable, the alignment with Kaiser and Indian River State College, all of their medical programs, to where the students, there's some special cohorts for our St. Lucie Public School students, for acceptance once they meet criteria. In addition to that, we have started a recruitment initiative to where we have our students that are graduating, we're currently doing job recruitment fairs with all of the hospitals. The idea of this is, when students graduate from us, by the end of May, they should have a job placement, hopefully at either a hospital, or one of the assisted living facilities, some kind of medical facility. And in addition to that, they're able to further their education within the healthcare field. If they're working at one of the institutions such as the hospital, they are able to get most of the time, two-thirds of their tuition paid. So with this right now, we have grown and evolved so much from 2017, and this pipeline is to where, when the students graduate, even before they walk across that stage, they should be able to know that they're interviewing, or they've secured a position, and they know where they are going. With this initiative and this push, we're hoping that, you know, the students understand that they can go to school here, they could further their education, they can work here, they can get the help, and that way, we keep those students here within our community.
And then Alicia works with April Mincy, and we make sure our counselors are well-aware of these opportunities as well. So thank you, Alicia. So our, we're getting closer to the end here. For our new and expanded CTE programs, this is all in reaction to the current needs. We have added programs, like the Outboard Marine Program at Centennial High School, fantastic program, very successful, right out of the gate. We know that some of our other districts are now looking to us to see what we did so they can replicate it. We also took the existing program at Port St. Lucie High School and expanded it to Business Construction Technology, so it goes beyond just carpentry, it's all of the fields that you've heard about in today's videos. Same with Engineering and Manufacturing Technology Programs. We also added Pharmacy Tech for the first time, and that's part of Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, the West Prep Magnet School Program. And that one is fantastic, we have some great partnerships there. And then Allied Health and Medical, we are really just expanding every single year here, including adding more CNA programs. The unique part about CNA is to, in order to offer that, you have to have a registered nurse as the instructor. So that takes time to get that established. So when we get a program that has two or three teachers, then we have the opportunity to add CNA. We also have just been fortunate enough to receive five new grants from the Department of Education, all of them that we applied for, as a matter of fact, to add some pre-apprenticeships. And for pre-apprenticeships, you have to have a business sponsor. You cannot do that alone as a school district. So we have pre-apprenticeships in all of these areas now, Building Construction Technologies, Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering, Technical Design, Outboard Marine Service, and Pharmacy Tech. And some of them, we just received the grant, so we will begin to implement, implement three of them we just received. So Business Construction Technology, very quickly, students can attend this program at Port St. Lucie High regardless of where they live, and it is expanded to include all of those areas that you see there. We want to make sure that students are exposed to all pieces, just as that student said in the video, that's how they learn what area they want to specialize in. They cannot do apprenticeship programs until they're 18 years old. So we want to give them the time to decide and really get exposed to know what they want to go into, the apprenticeship programs. So you can see more here about the coursework and the certification they get, and we work very closely with the Treasure Coast Builders Association. They are now there all the time, they meet there monthly, they talk to the kids, they're very, very involved with the program. So that is an excellent partnership. The Outboard Marine Technology Program, some of you may have seen the program or met the new teacher, but he is doing an outstanding job. That program filled up to 100 students in the very first year, and it continues to grow. We have a very strong Yamaha partnership there, but we also are partnering with all of the marine industry, including the new company director that has just come on board. And Alicia has met with them already, and that's well on its way.
With that one, I don't want to put you on the spot. I know tomorrow is a big event, a director, can you just take a second and tell us about that?
We're actually doing, it's part of the Skills Gap 2.1, it's strategic planning. And so we are working together with Career Source, Indian River State College, the Economic Development Council, to be able to support director and their need of employees. Currently, they are looking for entry-level employees, but they would like to grow them within the next five years. And so for us, St. Lucie Public Schools, I'm actually giving a tour today, later on this afternoon, they're coming up from Broward, they would like to see our space, and we're looking to do the partnership to where their employees come in and actually show our students a skill set as early as 10th grade. We are, they're partnering within the boot camp, and they are going to try to recruit some of our current students as well. We have a couple different layers to the strategic plan, but the idea is to get them, they have an apprenticeship, now that we're going to work on the pre-apprenticeship, we want to be able to fill their jobs within the next five years.
So director is downtown at the port, the port that's been re, you know, it's being revitalized, and so we're right in there. I mean, we're right in the middle of it, working with Alicia and the folks, so it's like, you know, every day something new and innovative is happening, and we're right there with our partners. Thanks, Alicia.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes, it's director with a K, and they have that new yacht lift that is amazing down in the port. And you can see at the first two bullets here, we have, currently, we have two industry certifications that the students get in marine, and we're adding another one that's going to be coming onboard. Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering, that particular program is at Treasure Coast High School, it's got an amazing lab that continues to- It's got an amazing lab that continues to be updated constantly. We just added a virtual welder there. Amazing equipment, that's the one that my daughter went to and thank goodness. But it has continued to grow and it's better and better every single year. So you can see the certifications that they get there. Those certifications are very challenging. They're, some of them are four-part certifications, they're not easy. It's not a sit for one test and you are certified at all. The Pharmacy Technician Program, that is our new program, that is actually the classroom. They have all fantastic equipment courtesy of our MSAP grant. And they work with local pharmacies. They are certified, registered with the Florida Board of Pharmacy. And this was something Alicia had to do a lot of research to get us up and running with this and make sure that we meet all the requirements. This is an eight-course program, it can be quite intensive. And the students will now have an opportunity to do a pre-apprenticeship and go right into the field with CVS, working with our partners at CVS and Walgreens and others. It says seven courses, I thought it was eight, maybe it's seven. So you can see here that these students have great opportunities for their future as well. And we encourage students to do Pharmacy Tech if they're interested in the medical field, they get so much knowledge. Technical Design is another program at Port St. Lucie High School. It was the old drafting program. It's been completely updated, it's got 3D printers, AutoCAD, Inventor, other, other things. And they work, they design the blueprints and all and then they work closely with the Building Technology Program, the students that do the hands-on work. So that program leads to those three industry certifications that you see bulleted there. Medical Program, we only have one slide for it because it's at every single school and you can see the students can go through different tracks. Allied Health is the one that's at all, five of our high schools. And that, that one all includes EKG as well as they can move up and do nursing assistant and do the CNA, which is in the bottom corner. At Treasure Coast High School, they can also do Emergency Medical Responder. We have had kids that ride on the ambulance and provide medical services that way. We have added Health Unit Coordinator, that is now at Fort Pierce Westwood High School, a demand of the medical community. So those students become record specialists and can move into the management side or the office side of working in medicine. And then we have a fantastic biomedical program at Port St. Lucie High School, also with a St. Lucie Public School graduate as the teacher. That is a relatively new program, as well as Exercise Science at Fort Pierce Westwood. So students can access medical programs everywhere. And then we do have Automotive, we do work with the automotive industry and that is at two schools, Port St. Lucie High and Fort Pierce Central High School. We have to follow rigorous safety and student numbers. The numbers are capped for safety reasons in those programs. And our newest program to be coming onboard next year is, Fort Pierce Central High School is going to begin, Treasure Coast, is it Treasure Coast? Treasure Coast High School is going to begin with Global Logistics and that's because Todd Smith, I always associate him with Fort Pierce Central, but it is Treasure Coast High School and they will be adding Global Logistics. And that is also in response to what the business community is asking for and it's one area that we did not have covered in CTE. And that is a very comprehensive overview. We know that was a lot, but we really wanted to make sure to cover everything or at least get you started if you were unfamiliar with career technical education. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair. Just listening to the presentation is phenomenal. Looks like we have something for... Okay. I was saying, just listening to the presentation was phenomenal. I see people nodding here like I can hear you now. But, I mean, it looks like we have something almost for everyone and the good part about it is that they're able to stay here and work here if they are not going, you know, they have the encouragement to live right in St. Lucie County and, and bring back what their knowledge is to our county in which we live in. It's, you got me excited, okay? I wish I can go back to school and take the building construction one. But maybe I have to go to college now to get that.
Come to the boot camp.
All the money that we spend to, to keep up our homes. And if we knew more of that, we wouldn't have to spend so much. I'm talking personally. But it's, 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 thank you. You know, thank you for the work because I know how complicated it is. And, you know, everybody can't do what you do. And so we thank you for coming back to St. Lucie County. I'm looking at Felicia now because, you know, you could have went anywhere, but you came back here. You came back home and now you're sitting with the board and with the, you know, with the administrators and, and you're making your impact and the difference. And so I thank you in behalf of all of our students for your work and for all of you. You know, each of you have a tremendous task ahead of you with what you do and I personally believe in very high expectations for our children, very high expectations. And I do believe that no matter what they may be doing in the way of performance, they could do better and they can do more, but that they do need caring adults is extremely important to make a difference. My question is, and I believe, Dr. Prince, you did a presentation before, but I just wanted to be reemphasized on how do we go about recruiting our students? Is everyone given the opportunity, no matter what their background is, no matter what their situation? And if so, how do we go about bringing them in? It's, you know, because I know that's what we do. We're not waiting for them to come to us anymore, but we go to them. So please tell us how you go about recruiting students for the programs.
Yes, thank you. We start in eighth grade when counselors go and talk to the students about their high school choices. Some of the actual CTE programs start in 10th grade, but we still want them to know what's going to be available to them. And then our students also have a freshman seminar class that they take and part of that class is learning about all of the programs that are offered and career clusters. And our students were using Naviance, now they're using Career Shines. So every student does a career portfolio, it's college and career. It's learning about yourself, your interests, your aptitude, the world of work, what your choices are. And then we pair that with what's available right here in St. Lucie County. And now with all of these things we talked about today, especially with the economy coming back locally, we talk to them about what they can get right here. So there's a lot of different ways that we do that. Tours around all the programs, through their courses, through their freshman seminar class and other classes in middle school, they do career research. There is no entry criteria for these CTE programs. None of them require a certain test or grade level scores or anything to get in. So it's for all students. We train our counselors constantly. I mentioned April and Alicia work closely together to make sure our counselors are aware of all these things. Because that's really the key, that's who they sit with when they pick their courses. So that person needs to be knowledgeable about what the options are. And they, it's, it's really a one-on-one conversation with each child about what they want. In terms of getting the word out to the community, we also try to involve our news partners. You'll see in that presentation, there's lots of videos because that gets people talking, just word of mouth. Does your child know about this program? Because sometimes the parent wants to get involved in the decision and can help influence. So lots of different ways that we do it now. And I know I didn't just give an exhaustive answer to your question, but it's open to everybody, including applying for programs at schools that are not your own. For example, Pharmacy Tech at Fort Pierce Westwood is open district-wide, no entry criteria. All students are eligible.
And in the way of getting it out to the community, do we have someone, I know right now we're in COVID, so COVID, so we're not trying to do that now. But once we get past this stage, do we actually have the funding where someone can go out to the community? If we, the board members, say, okay, we got a spot for you to go and share with parents, you know?
Yes, we...
Where you can go and talk to the parents. And for me personally, I'm part of a large church community. So if I was to talk to a pastor and say, you know, we're offering these things in our CT, you know, courses, programs, and we would like for your congregation to hear something about it. Give us 10 minutes or five minutes where someone can come and talk to you.
Absolutely, we do it all the time. I went to the Lincoln Park Allegheny meeting. I do it, Alicia does it all the time. That's a big part of her role is going out to the community.
Even on Sundays?
Flex time, Alicia. She also has three career specialists on her staff that work directly with our teachers and our students. And so if it's a specialty, they specialize. If it's a specialty area, they can go out. They can talk, we talk to restaurants because we have a culinary program in every school as well. We do kitchen crawls. I didn't get into every CTE area today either. So depending on the subject matter, if you just ask me or Alicia, we'll get the right person there to share it with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alicia.
I think the one key piece that ties in, at the very beginning of the first video, when they were talking to Ricardo, who's, he's very shy, didn't want to talk. You know, he said, "My counselor told me."
I heard that.
And, and when we do these counselor tours, he could have been missed out. He would, he may have missed that. And then what's he going to be doing? And that's for, that rarely represents what we're doing.
And that was the key piece that I really wanted to bring out. That our counselors are talking to every single student about these programs so that they have a knowledge and they can get into it. And then I'm thinking, how do we help the parents even know more about these programs? Because a parent many times will be the one that say, hey, you're good at this. Let's go ahead and get you in this program or that program.
Normally, also, that's part of the parent orientation that we normally do this time of year for incoming ninth graders. This year with COVID, we're not doing it now. When we do that High School Transition Day, we'll make sure that there's a component for that as well. And students can change their mind as well. You can pick a program and still change your mind. And we also have students who do more than one, so there's many options.
Do they happen during the school hours or is it after school?
Yes, ma'am, they're during the school hours. They are one or two of their seven classes that they pick and they are primarily all sequences. So they're usually 10th, 11th, and 12th grade or 9th through 12th.
Okay, and so, but the OJT and all of these, the internship, those are like after?
Yes, let me, let me give you an example. With Allied Health, they start with the first course and then they go to a second course. Sometimes those are two in the same year, depends on what grade the student is in. And then when they get to the third course, they are going out to hospitals, they are going to, she mentioned childcare, assisted living, different facilities that have medical needs that are our partners. The teacher supervises their time there. They either get on buses or they get in cars and they get out to those, those places. Depends on the type of industry as to whether or not they go out during the high school day or if it's better to do it in the summer through summer programs. It varies across all of our CTE programs.
Okay, and with reference to, this is high school, but you know, sometimes you, even as an adult, you don't really know what you like until you do it.
Yes.
So how do we get from not knowing what I want to do to there? I mean, and I'm talking about the, the technical part of it, they, you know, do, do they, do we have classes or things that they can actually work on with their hands? And, you know, to say, well, okay, I don't like this, but I like this, before they decide in high school, eighth grade, whatever, that this is what I really want to settle on?
Yes, that is an ongoing process. It actually starts younger than that, it starts in middle school. And we do those career portfolios and it builds, the student builds a portfolio because they change their mind over time, they change their preferences, they get exposed to new things. So they take surveys, they take interest inventories, national, we don't make them up. They're nationally recognized surveys that they take, programs that they take as part of our Career Shines program and that's for all students. It starts in middle school. They take an Orientation to Careers segment in middle school and...
I'm sorry, what does that look like, that orientation, what is that?
It is exploring the world of work. There's, there's 18, 16 career clusters, 17 career clusters. They learn about those. So what does it mean to work in logistics? What does it mean to work in building construction technology? Do you like working inside or outside, with your hands or with your mind? Those types of questions, you get, they get deep in that. Then as they go through high school, they have a course in ninth grade as I mentioned, but as they go through high school, that continues to build. In ninth grade, it's through freshman seminar. As you move up, it's integrated sometimes in your core content and sometimes with the counselors coming in and doing sessions. But they continue to work on that portfolio. If they're going to college, they use that same system to explore the colleges that meet their needs. And they can search for colleges that, with very minute details. You know, they know they want to go to college and explore something because they've done all this preparation. They can find a college or a career technical school, a vocational school that meets their needs. They get to go around and see the different programs in their school to see which ones they think they would like. Sometimes though, as you mentioned, you can get a whole college degree and change your mind. So we don't tell students they can't change their mind. If they do a first year of a course and they don't like it, they can change.
So let's say that I am in Port St. Lucie and the school that I want to go to is in another zone, another...
Yeah.
Is transportation provided for those kids or I have to get myself there?
It depends on the program. We have some that are called a tractor programs or they're part of a magnet program. Those have transportation. So that would be anything at Westwood, so Pharmacy Tech, Robotics, Healthcare Unit Coordinator, all of those and others. Transportation is provided. If they are choosing Business Construction Technology, transportation is provided. But some programs, it is not and they would have to get themselves there. For the most part, those programs are at Port St. Lucie and Treasure Coast High School, but otherwise, transportation is provided.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, the videos that you showed in this advertisement that's here, are these being shown on our, our channel, on our education channel?
Yes, Lydia is sitting behind you and she is nodding her head.
Frequently? Because I haven't seen one and I keep watching. And I'm not putting any of this down at all. I'll be quite blunt.
Yeah.
When I first got elected and we were up here and we all said our things, everybody that's on the school board is here, we have a job, in certain jobs and I look at my own job description and everybody else here does too. I mentioned about 30 years ago when I came here being down in Martin County and then trying to sell me a house, telling me how you don't want to bring your kids to Martin County schools in St. Lucie County. That's, that's been, that's not true. We all know that. 98.3, 98.3 graduation rate now. Nobody knows it, I'll be quite blunt and I'm actually giving everyone a compliment. Until we met about a month ago, Ms. Well, I didn't know about our vocational stuff and any of this. And this today, having listened to all of this and this young lady, and you're very impressive by the way, listening to all this, this is so much better than I thought. What a great program. Not that it can't be improved, I mean, it looks like something like Port St. Lucie High School, those things could be in more schools, you know? I, I think you have the same, when I hear you talk, I think we should, you know, things should be, but it's better than I thought. I don't know what you think, Jennifer, but the only problem is, Mr. Jen, and this goes to your, you gave good answers, how do we recruit the kids to do this? The best way to recruit the kids, you have your ideas, but you're educators, okay? I'm in marketing all my life. The best way to recruit them is through the parents. And our parent participation, quite blunt, stinks. I, when I go out and I talk to teachers or principals, I've talked to seven distinct principals and asked them what their main problem is, what's the main thing that you'd like to change? And they, all of them, every one of them, Mr. Jen said, we can't get the parents, we can't get them in here, you know? So as part of our, and I'm looking at it... So as part of our, and I'm looking at it, and I know, I know you've said the same thing to me. Part of our job is in two years, we're gonna have another referendum coming up. We gotta get ready for it. But you can't get ready for it when you're gonna campaign the last year. You gotta get ready now, you know? I don't want to go off of my thoughts here, but this ad right here, this ad, if you're in marketing, you look for special things. You look for call to attention, things like that. Like you got the airplane here or whatever it is, the cockpit with the sunglasses. There's a call to attention here. You've got all the good things, the good points, and you got verifications on the bottom. It's a great, it's a great ad. It really is. The problem is, for me, it's in Florida Trend. I want to see it in St. Lucie County. I want the people to vote for that referendum and I want them to know how good we're doing. These programs are fantastic. And being a new person, you folks all know that. You all know what's going on. I don't think the average person at all, I couldn't even guess. 95% of the parents, never mind the average person, has no idea that we offer these kinds of programs. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how I feel because I'm out there every day in every way and every, all the clubs and places that I belong and being in politics for all these years. These are great programs. Remember what I told you, I don't know if you remember, but I did this all through city council years. How do you know Mercedes Benz is a good car, Troy? Because they tell us it's a good car. So if we don't get out there and it's part of our job, this ad, a good way, this should be on Facebook. I'm gonna go home and put it on Facebook today.
It's on Facebook.
Well, it should be on more because I haven't seen it.
It's on our Facebook page.
What if our 2,500 teachers all went home and put this on Facebook? I mean, those are the kind of things that we have to do. I don't know, Dr. Mills, if you agree, but do you want to get the kids involved and recruited? You gotta get their parents involved. I'm gonna leave you with this. We need to, we need to get it out there. We need to be the Mercedes Benz because we are. But nobody knows. Debbie, they don't know. I'm telling you, they don't know. You guys, like I said, you've been here and you know. But I, being new, I'm just bringing some insight. I think that's one of the major jobs. And if we want to get that money, which is part of my job description in two years, we gotta start now. We have a great, a great school system here. We really do. And everybody's got to know about it.
Couple of things there. Number one, you know, the first and best teacher should be the parent. That's not the case for most of our kids. Our best selling point is the students themselves.
Take your mask off for me, Wayne. I can't.
The best selling point are the students themselves. And when they see the benefits from them, the word of mouth from the students, talking to students through their social media. The words out there are better now than it's ever been. Is it out to everybody? No. But with the key industry partners and the Economic Development Council, everybody knows that if they come to the school district and says, "This business is opening here. Director's gonna open there. We're gonna put Tampco in Port St. Lucie." What are the public schools doing? What are we, how are we aligned? They know that, that piece. Does the general, general public know? No. We'll get the video clips. You'll see the news clips and those things. We constantly bombard that information out there. To me, the most important selling point is for the students themselves because they will, you know, they'll listen to each other more than they'll listen to us or listen to a parent. The parents, those that are actively engaged and involved, they know, they get it. But that's not the case for most of our students. That's where then our graduation coaches, our counselors, and those stand in that gap. So I've been doing this for many, many years. And you could have asked me the same question you asked those other principals in 1980, 1990, my first principalship, and I would have said parent involvement. It's always been that way. And they do as much as we can to entice, to get the parents in, but it's a constant, constant struggle with that. So then you just have to bypass it and go to other means. And it's really directly to the students themselves. And then what's, you know, what's in their best interest or what are the options? Like Ms. Richardson was asking, how do they get this information? Can we change this and that? So I like the word you used, phenomenal. Because as I sat here, I couldn't help but be very, very proud of what we have accomplished. This is a premier model program across the state and in the country for what we're doing in St. Lucie County. The business community gets it, the, you know, and we're aligned with them. The students are getting it. Our schools are getting it. You know, do we have a long ways to go or more challenges? Absolutely. We always will have. But to where we are at this point is just great. That's why we did this as long as we did. I didn't shortcut it. She kept looking at me to say, are we gonna, because I really wanted, you know, I was picking up stuff that I had either knew or forgotten about because it's so complicated. And we just touched on some of it that's out there. So we continue to bring, we continue to market. I appreciate your compliment, Alicia. You know, Alicia, you, she's, we don't want her going anywhere, right?
She's not going anywhere.
Right, right, right? They always.
She misses teaching, but she's not going anywhere. We talk about it all the time.
That skill set there, they try to, the business industry here tries to recruit her to work for them. Right? You can be honest. I know. And so, you know, we've got a really good thing going on here and we'll continue to improve that. When we get closer to the referendum, we have, we do a lot, we have a whole public information campaign that's tied into that and things that go on at school centers. And that's coming up. That really wasn't part of it for today, but I appreciate the comments and we'll, you know, we will continue to try to get the word out there to everybody.
Let me ask this question. Do we have the funding necessary to maybe start advertising commercials on certain channels in regards to what we offer, you know, as a school district? Is that something that's practical or is that something that is out of our ballpark financially?
You look at the analytics of what value you get for that for such a high expensive piece to do? And do you really get that return? You know, the ROI on that, it's kind of mixed. That's, you know, it's better within the school centers themselves to the students. The teachers themselves being aware of what's going on, you know, so that they can benefit the students. Are you talking about as far as students knowing what their options are?
No, I'm saying in addition to what we're already doing to get it out there and get it out into the community.
We do extensive, yeah.
You can't sell it if you don't tell it.
Yeah. We haven't used that media as far as TV commercials. We have used a lot of the magazines, the Indian River Magazine, the PSL Magazine, the Fort, you know, we've done ads in there the last five years within those. Looking at the return where you may see a private school and you'll see our school center, just like what we did in this brochure, the jobs, what's it called that's coming up? The, the job thing?
The state of the jobs.
The state of the jobs. You know, we'll be heavily involved in that. You know, I'll get to make some comments regarding that. And that's where a lot of the business folks, a lot of them are there and their eyes are open. And they, you know, then they see, oh, I have another, I have another place to, not oh, but oh, I got another place to go to try to recruit employees for that. So we really are out there.
Now, I hear what, I hear what Mr. Kelly is saying is that there's still a large population that just don't know. That are adult population here. And many people take advantage of people not knowing. And will say they're not doing anything in the school district, you know, they don't have enough of these CTE classes, you know, programs. I mean, they're talking negative. And people are not hearing the positive enough where it resonates. So when I say commercial, I'm saying radio. I know we have in the magazines, I know one magazine I was gonna mention to you that's like this, but it's in St. Lucie, something or another, that we can put this in. But I'm saying newspaper and radio, all these radio stations that we have in this community, the television programs, everybody looks at TV, mostly everybody. And so just combining that, if we have the resource to do it, and as Mr. Kelly was saying, not waiting until when we get ready to campaign, but having something that goes year round to really get in the ears of people over and over again, this is what we offer, this fantastic program, 93%, you know, and not just that, but even this, the technical, the college and career ready programs and the certifications. I mean, somehow just captivating that into commercial form where people hear it over and over and over until it saturates this community. I know that can be an expense. And that's why I said, if we had the expense, let's get it out there so that folks understand. Anybody you talk to will say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, the graduation rate in St. Lucie County is this. And oh, yeah, we have all these CTE programs. And oh, yeah, we're great," you know?
We're seeing a, we're seeing a really big change in that in the last three years. It's slow to move everybody. And, you know, the tipping point is near. But we're seeing it now through all of these round tables and organizations. We're not talking five people sitting around a table. We're talking 100 representatives from different industries that meet. When I spoke to the Treasure Coast Builders Association, so many people in the room. And so we take advantage of targeted marketing. Some people don't care what we have in certain specific industries. So we get out to the people who do care and very, in a very targeted fashion, get the word out. We've really, really been doing a big push in the last three years and I'm starting to see the comments coming that used to be, "We didn't think you had anything." They're starting to say, "Oh, we see what you have now." So we are making progress. I will tell you, COVID put a stop to some of that. People were distracted with other things and we couldn't do the big tours. Chamber of Commerce does tours. Parents come and do tours. A lot of that has stopped. In terms of targeted marketing, our grants don't allow us to do advertising. Those are prohibited expenses. So we try to utilize all the free resources. I have seen the videos on our TV station. I don't watch our station, but as I, oh, I shouldn't say that because I see, I know what's on there. But I, but I do see it when I flip through the channels.
You're talking too much. Too much information.
I don't watch it because it's my video or it's Dr. Princeton. I've seen it already. But I have seen those videos playing on a loop. And if you look through all the videos that we sent you that are embedded in here, there's WPTV. There are some of the TV stations you're referring to that have done great coverage. They just don't want to do it over and over again. So we have to wait till the next, you know, when a big grant comes out, we do it or we're starting a new program. You know, we try to take advantage, capitalize on new things that are happening.
And we do see the improvement, you know? Three of the board members, including myself, we've seen tremendous improvement. We're just saying there's still a whole large gap out there. How do we address that? How do we address that so that we can just get it even more so where we want it as far as the knowledge of the people out there? Because like Jack said, before he came here, he thought it was, I guess, maybe even a mess. Not realizing and knowing, just hearing one side over and over again, you know? Because there is a good group out there, heavy group that is really putting out the nags. And it's what they're going to do. And that's fine. But we need to make sure that we are counteracting that and being even more aggressive in the area of advertisement using the media.
One more time, Mr. Jen, I'm trying to, and again, I'm being blunt. She gets it. I know he does too. I think we all do. When I hear the responses back, when I talk to you about this, and again, in no way, in no way am I being negative to you folks. But when you talk back, and actually, you work for us. You work for us, right? And your responses are a little defensive. That's okay. That's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to stick up for staff. You're supposed to make staff better. You stick up for the teachers and you do a great job. Okay. Being blunt, again, we're telling you, and she gets it. People don't know. It's great to tell each other. We all tell each other. And the word of mouth and the kids' word of mouth and the, it's not working. It doesn't work that way. Everything's changed. Mrs. Hawley, you've mentioned this when I, when I first got on the board. Things are different. We don't, newspapers, you know, I could advertise 30 years ago when I ran for office, put a full page ad in, wow, get a million votes. Can't do that today. Newspapers don't make it. We got social media, so many other ways, television. I don't know. I know I'm not an educator, but if I had any kind of degree, it would be in marketing. I do know marketing. And you have to keep it simple. This is a great ad. Whoever did this ad, I'm complimenting it. It has the call to attention, all the specifics, and on the bottom, verifications. But it's not, it's in the state, in the state paper, as she mentioned. I want it all local now. How do you do this? And again, please, don't get defensive. And I know we do great things. But I am just so impressed that everything is even better than I thought it was. And I don't know if you're getting that, because I know you had concerns like I did, okay? The vocational programs are much better and you guys are great. Staff is wonderful. Somebody like this young lady, I get so impressed. And the EDC and Sean Boyle and the Boys and Girls Club, we're the best. St. Lucie County is great. He knows that. It's just a great county. He knows it, okay? So maybe he should be the guy. I don't know. But if we have to hire, this is the point, it all takes money. If it wasn't for money, we'd have no problem. Do we have to hire an outside media group? Maybe. Maybe we can get private money to do that. I don't know. But we need to have the public know how good we are. 98.3, right? We need, public needs to know all that. They need to see this. I'm gonna put it on Facebook, but I wish all 2,500 teachers would go out and do that. Whatever we have to do, Mr. Jen, I just, I think it's great and we, people have to know that we're the best. We are the best.
Appreciate the comments and we continue to expand that through our social media. If you looked at today's Lucy Links, several articles on what we're, even what we're talking about today. We have done a, and Dr. Mills mentioned it before, from where we're to where we are now, as far as everybody tooting their own horn at their school centers themselves and pushing out the good news, no matter how insignificant it may seem. It's not, none of it's insignificant when there's a student associated with that. So we continue to do that. Our public affairs office has done a remarkable job with our social media campaign. Lydia monitors that. Her staff monitors that. Is there room for improvement? You can always, always do that to reach the folks that are out there. So we continued, and I hear what the board is saying, and that's why it was important for us to get in, really into the weeds today, for everybody to kind of, you know, refresh what we are as far as our two new board members, to see, you know, that we do have something to be very, very proud of. We go out and speak to the different groups. Any group that invites us out there, we're there. Any of the, you know, we're everywhere. I've never turned anybody down that's asked us to come out and speak. And so we'll continue to do that and look at new ways as well, you know, as to get that word out. So I hear exactly what you're saying.
Please, because when you say we're everywhere, again, talking to each other, that's what we're doing. When you go to the EDC or you go to the Children's Services Council or Toms Group, we're talking to each other. And I'm trying to get that into you, you know, we're not talking to the public. We're not talking to the Elks Club. We're not talking to the Knights of Columbus. We're not talking to the guys at the pool hall. You know what I'm saying? I don't mean to put you down. I'm just telling you, 90% of the people out there, I'm just throwing, they don't know. They don't know how good our school system is. And it's that good. It is. I'm, please don't take me, I'm being very, very, you guys are great, but everybody's got to know it.
I like to reemphasize, this is an excellent article of advertising.
And it's there too, on the banner.
It's a well-done ad. It's a well-done.
That banner is going around the community too. And that's the same ad, if you look to your right or your left, your right?
This is incredible. And we just need to get, what I'm hearing and what I agree with is we need to get this even more out there, find ways even more. We need to saturate this ad in the community. Because this will change the minds of many people who are just, they're just in another world somewhere. They're not even, they don't even care. So they'll say anything. But, you know, it's like a whole other populations that we're missing, that we need them to become word of mouth as well. And we have gotten better at that, but we still have a long ways to go. So what are those ways that we can look at that can close the gap?
No, you guys are absolutely right. That ad, our intent is to duplicate it and use it over and over again. And it serves multiple purposes. It's not just about CTE, but it does include CTE. And, you know, as you can see, that doesn't tell a complete story. Look how long it took us to go through a complete story. But it's, it's one way to get the word out. We also look at analytics. We look at who uses Facebook. Facebook for some of us is still relevant. For younger folks, some of our younger parents, it's not relevant at all. So we have to change our media to be Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter. We utilize all of them.
Not change it so much, but just saying, make sure we reach these areas.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because this is, Facebook has got its own good and its own right to a certain population.
Exactly.
But you're saying hit these other.
I'm saying we can't just pick one way. We have to do every way that you guys are talking about and every way we haven't even mentioned.
There you go. There you go. Every way. Every way. And if you need a consensus, not a, we don't have to make a motion or anything, but if everybody feels the same way, if we all feel that way, I don't know how you feel. Maybe I'm going overboard. Just to tell you folks that we'd like you to get that word out. I think. out. I think, I think the consensus is here, and please, I'm giving you guys a, you guys are AAA, I just want everybody to know it. Don't take it in the other way.
Well, and we do monitor which of those mediums are reaching people, you know, as much as we can, through, through Terrence's shop and Lydia's shop, we monitor who we're reaching, and, and so we can pivot and, and get more out there, and maybe we can talk about that in a more general term at another point.
We got a great media department, they have a lot to do, more than I thought. They run a channel, they do all of this, take care of this today. You guys put a lot of information out to the schools. They may need help, we may need, we may need some outside people, I don't know, I don't know. But I'm done. I'm all done.
I, I know we're going over, but, you know, this is what the workshop is for. So I, one of the things that I, I'm thinking, we're using everything, all the mediums or media that we need to use. However, one of the greatest way to get stuff out is word of mouth. And I think, like, you know, from somebody that has been there, done that, and, and spreading it, you know, it's like one light, you know, and then we have light all these other candles. So I'm right there that there are some areas, and that's why I asked about transportation, because if, again, I'm in Port St. Lucie, and I want to do welding in Fort Pierce, but that's not one of the attractive programs, then that is going to be a problem, because I want to be a welder. You know, how am I if I can't afford or don't have a way to get there, you know? So I'm thinking that, I don't know what the way, how to get around that, but this is where I'm at, this is where I want to be, you know? So that, I think, is what would be one of the ways of maybe trying to close some of those gaps. There are, we have to know, and you know, everybody know that, we need to know our, our demographics, we need to know who, what our audience is, and what it is that they need. So I think that if we identify the audience, wherever the audience is, and what it is that they need. I was very happy to see this young man, I, I don't remember his name, you know, and he with a welding cap on, and you know, he was just, and when they say, I'm happy to be here, and I look forward to going tomorrow morning, or looking forward, you know, that's what we need to see, that's what we need to hear, that our kids, and so we need to have more of that, more. So we need to, this is where we are, we, and, and there are so many people, so many kids, that is the more of, that I don't think we are reaching, you know? And, and I think that, yes, the, the social and emotional learning comes apart in that, because we have to find out what's, you know, what's motivating them, and also, you know, transportation, I think, could be a problem, I don't know, I'm not in there, you know, but, and the counselors, and, you know, so, but that sector, that sector, I think, is where we should, I would like to see us focus on that area, that needs it, that is not being fed. And again, getting the word out, we're going to bypass the parents, because sometimes the parents are just not there yet, you know, so we've got to get to the kids. It's the kids, how are we going to get to the kids, you know, and, and feed them, and, and encourage them, and motivate them, you know? So that's, this is where we are, that's where we need to be, that group, not necessarily everybody, because there are some people that knows about it already.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just need a little bit more feedback. Are you referring to our students as they're picking their programs that they don't know? Because that's where it matters, is when they make their decisions, and when the counselor meets with them.
Or getting the word out to them, or making them aware, I guess, or even having the kids, the students, like Felicia?
Alicia.
Alicia. You know, these that have already gone through some of these programs, go back, let them.
That's what we do. They, they do it in their schools. That's, that's not a marketing campaign to the general.
Okay, I understand you, yes.
That is, students, you need to know this, and you've learned this about yourself, here's your choices, here's your options. Now, a lot of times, you have to understand, a 14-year-old doesn't want to change schools because a program has a concentration. Every school usually has a way to meet their needs. So if I'm a hands-on student, I might not want to transfer to Port St. Lucie High, because I've been dreaming of going to Centennial all my life, so I'm going to do Outboard Marine, where I can still do hands-on. And what you, what you will see, if you look deeper into those, some of those curriculum things, is that each of those have embedded components. So although you go to Port St. Lucie High, you're going to get electrical and all that, you're also going to get that in marine, you're going to get it in manufacturing. So you're going to get it in automotive nowadays. So students have an option at every school that is tied to their career cluster. So you can't think in terms of narrow careers, a specific title, you have to think career cluster, because that's how K through 12 education works. It's, it's a little less specialized, except for those niche programs. When a student is so serious, even at a young age, that they're willing to transfer to another school, they can. And I can tell you, as a principal in the district, in both communities, we, we don't have a big number of students who can't get to a program at another school. If that happens, the principal calls us and we work something out. They are normally matched, I'm part of training the counselors, they, and I'm not being defensive, I'm just explaining the situation. They are matched to a curriculum that meets their needs, and the counselor now has tools about that child that helps them give that advice. That's the real process that happens at the student level, and the general public would not necessarily be aware of that.
Dr. Wells.
Yes, ma'am.
You hit a point earlier, when you said, Facebook addresses one type of audience.
Yes.
We need to address other types of audience.
Right.
And I heard Ms. Richardson say that, she mentioned one of the students and his, his testimony, you know, his story about getting involved in this and what it's done for him, right? Why don't we look at, because I, I like solutions, we can talk and talk and talk, but let's look at some solutions where we can close this gap of, of making sure that more people hear about the wonderful work we're doing. And as I'm listening, I'm coming up with thoughts of saturate social media, you know, you can't, you know, and I know Lydia, you do a great job already on, like, at times, you, you highlight certain things that's going on in the district, but why not highlight over and over and over again, the accomplishments of this district? And so that everybody on social media is getting it, and not just getting it one time, and then they don't hear it for a while, but making those points every day on social media, different points, it could be, the message could be given different ways, you know, on our great accomplishment. It could be somebody that's just giving their, their personal experience, like that student, or it can be one of these at a time, you know, one of these categories at a time, but just constantly, over and over again, saturate social media. I think that's about the least expensive way, you know, in comparison to global TV, or, you know, that, and even radio, because a lot of folks are on different types of social media. And if we could at least start there, where it's a saturation, when I, when I hit my Facebook page, which I do throughout the day, I'm seeing something pop up every single time on our accomplishments.
Dr. Mills, you're, you're the educator, not me, but I, I, I know that repetition is the best way to learn, I, you know?
Right.
Over and over and over, you're right. Social media isn't as big as a lot of people think, even in campaigns and stuff, I know that we just went through one, you folks are beginning, social media may be 20 or 25% of it, what I'm told by the people who know, but ads on buses, garbage trucks, those new ads that you see up on billboards, that, that's everywhere. She said it, Dr. Wells said it, everything, everybody, but we just can't, I'm being redundant, we just can't keep talking to each other about it. It doesn't, you know, the EDC and the Children's Services Council is us, the teachers associations, the union, that's us, we're telling each other. And I'm being very redundant, but it's to your point, what you're saying, but.
Yeah, the way.
I think, I think you get it, I'll be quiet.
No, no, I understand.
I think you get what I'm saying, I know.
I, I love testimonials. Dr. Mills mentioned testimonials, and they're very powerful, they're moving, and when they're students. That is part of what they see in like Career Shines-type videos, they're not always our students. I know Alicia has talked about, has started working on getting testimonials for every single program, so that we can help Lydia get those videos out. But if you look in your folder, you'll see behind that first document on the right, there's all those pathways about each program, and I know, I have seen those out on Facebook in my age bracket, that's the only one I really use, but I know Lydia also uses Instagram and Twitter and some others as well, and those are documents that can be put out. You mentioned, was it you, Dr. Mills, that mentioned one at a time, putting them out one at a time?
One at a time.
So if you look at those pathway documents, it's one program at a time. And, and you're right, you can't put all of, all 37 out there at once, but you can put them out there one at a time.
Bits of information.
Chunks, absolutely.
Keep it simple, keep it simple.
Yeah, thank you.
One last thing, I'm sorry, I'm not really. So I, I think once we identify what the, the student is wanting to do, or what they, you know, they're, they're, yeah, then maybe Ahmad, or whatever his name is, can go as a student right now in the class, working towards his apprenticeship or whatever, he can go to this middle school, I'm not even talking about high schoolers, and say, listen, you know, try this, you know, because it's, when you hear it from your peer, it's a lot different from hearing it from your parents, you know?
So, so talking about that, that you're right, kids love to hear from other kids that are in the program, and that's a strategy that we use all the time when we do.
You do?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
When we do curriculum fairs, the students are the ones manning the tables. The teachers, they're supervising, but the students are there. We do it at the Fenn Center every year, except not this year. The students are manning the tables, the teachers, they're supervising, you're right. But we have to scale it up, scale it up, because one student can't hit all 18 middle schools and K eights to talk to our eighth graders. That's not practical, so we've started using virtual field trips to the programs, so students can get a glimpse into what the MOA program looks like. You know, if I'm interested in MOA, what does that look like? And there's kids that'll do a virtual field trip. And, and actually, that was one of the positives that's come about with COVID, is we've, we've learned how to use video and teams and other approaches to get to more students. We do love the idea of having kids go talk, and it's a strategy we use all the time. Seniors will talk to ninth graders, students will tour, and the students will do the presentation. But to get it out more and more, to kind of record it or do live sessions to more kids, we're going to do more of that, because as we've started to step into that, you are right, kids are moved by other kids, they listen to kids. So we're, we're going to expand the use of that strategy. So thank you for that.
Even that three-minute clip, even that, I mean, five seconds or whatever, but he, when he stood up there, I mean, that ministered to me.
Yes.
You know, it's like, okay, then I want to be a welder now, you know?
Yep. And we have to take clips of all the different programs if it's eighth graders.
And, you know, it, it doesn't have to be all at one time, like she was, one at a time, just one, you know, to, to the class, you know, it doesn't have to be 50 million, just one.
Yes, in the career exploration class, yes.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You know, one comment I want to make on all of this too, is that we, as board members, are, part of our charge is to be advocates for our public schools. So what we say, when we are in our individual groups and that sort of thing, goes a long way too. And especially for the two new ones, you all heard things that we probably haven't heard since we were on that election circuit prior. So it becomes incumbent on all of us to relay the good news.
Yes, ma'am.
In a way that is believable, because we do have people out there that don't think we're doing a good job, and their story perpetuates itself. We have to get in the middle of that story and say, no, look, here's the reality, here's the facts, here's what's really happening. And I think all of us have that ability and use that ability, but it's more important than ever that we stay in the forefront of that and share the good news about everything that's happening. Because I believe there's just certain segments that don't want to believe good about us, and that's the segments that we have to really be sure we, as board members, talk to and address as well. And doing that in conjunction with everything social media-wise and student-wise, our kids know what's going on, they know that we've got good things happening in our schools, they believe that, that's what gets them there every day and motivates them. There's adult populations that we have to be the ones that reach to and, and, and share the, share the news with.
Well said, well said.
And I'd like to say also that we are, we were elected by the constituents, so we do advocate for community.
Exactly.
Thank you.
But sometimes those of our constituents may not know the real reality.
I, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, and I, just to take it a step further, that group, but then you have that group that they're talking to that don't know, haven't heard the other side, that they convince one way or the other, right? So can I say one more thing before we close out? I want to thank Mr. Jen for, for, he's such a warrior, after having that surgery and coming here with that cane, and, and he's been sitting here while we've been doing all this discussing. Your legs are probably throbbing, you know, so thank you so much for.
Thank you.
Pushing your way in today.
Thank you, Mr. Jen.
I would like to thank you all for your suggestions and your comments and questions, and we'll take it all and go to work on those suggestions, thank you.
Well, we hit the mark, because that's what we wanted. And I appreciate Dr. Wild and Alicia and their, their staffs for what they've done, because there's a great story to tell, it's just getting the word out there, like you said, Jack. And I think it's important that the board knows that and should know more than anyone else that's out there, so you can offset. I don't get worked up about the negative stuff, I focus on the positive, what we're doing. People are going to have their own opinions, one way or the other, but as long as I know, and I do know this, and as long as you know, that what we're doing is benefiting these kids in our school centers and our general community, that's a step in the right direction. And so I do appreciate, I know it was a long day, but I think it was very valuable to the board and to what we're doing. And I wanted to make one special introduction, we, I don't know. This is Mr. Charles Fields, and he will be joining us in HR now, he'll be one of our investigators, and I'll be looking at, through, what's the official, employee investigations that we do on employees and employee relations, that was the word I was looking for. So we want to welcome you to St. Lucie County, and are you, do you have, are your foot in a boot, a boot? Yeah, so you don't want to show me up the first day? You know, I'm getting all this sympathy, and, you know, I'm going to take it, but, but welcome, and we look forward to working with you, and I just wanted the board to see you, Mr. Fields.
Okay, board members, thank you for your attention today and all of the comments. Thank you to staff for bearing with us and sharing all of the things you had to share. I appreciate the in-depthness of it, because it, it does arm us with information to go back and, and to share with our constituents and our, just the general public. So thank you all, and at this point, we are adjourned.